Hello, I am Danielle Karns, Vice President for Innovation and Strategic Partnerships at Edmonds College. Normally, we host these candidates on our campus for in-person conversations. For the second year, however, we're again getting creative about how we interact. On behalf of Edmonds College, our President, Dr. Amit Singh, and the Board of Trustees, I'm pleased to welcome you to this virtual forum. I'd like to thank the Lynnwood City Council Position 1, 2, and 3 candidates for participating today. And many thanks to all of the Lynnwood voters tuning in to learn more about the candidates who would like to represent you on your city council. Today's forum is sponsored by the Snohomish County Forum Coalition. Those partners are the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County, Snow Isle Libraries, the American Association of University Women, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Herald Media, and Edmonds College. Thank you again for being here with us today and participating in our democracy. Next, please welcome Jeanne Cravier and the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County.
Good morning, and thank you Danielle for that gracious welcome. The League of Women Voters of Snohomish County is honored to join the Forum Coalition to present candidates for the city of Lynnwood. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in the forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues which we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. And we are fiercely committed to empowering voters to make informed decisions. Candidate forums are a critical part of that work, so let's get started. It is my pleasure to introduce your moderator for this forum, John Bauer, Opinion Page Editor for the Daily Herald.
Hello, I am John Bauer, and I'd like to welcome our candidates for Lynnwood City Council. For Position 1, Nick Coelho and Shirley Sutton. For Position 2, Patrick Decker and Naz Lashkari. And for Position 3, Lisa Utter. Joshua Binda was not available to join us today. So those are your candidates, and we thank them all for running for office and for their willingness to serve and for participating in this forum. It is the policy that, oh, well, we've gone through that, so, sorry. All right, so we've shared the topics of the questions with the candidates. I will pose the question. I will kind of jumble up the order of responses, so everybody gets a fair start to be first and last to answer. And the participants are aware of a timer. They'll have 60 seconds to answer all but the last question, which they'll have 90 seconds to answer. So I'm going to start now with the first question. And for Position 1, for Nick, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Yeah, thank you for the question. For one, I have a finger on the pulse of what many Lynnwood businesses are going through with my near decade of experience as a small business owner in the retail and service sectors that power our city. On council, I'll be able to provide direct knowledge of how the policies we deliberate will affect our economy and many of the workers who power it. On top of that, I've spent quite a bit of time getting involved around town. I've been the Chair of our city's Parks and Recreations Board for nearly two years, and I just wrapped up an 18-month stint on the South Lynnwood Neighborhood Co-Design Committee. And like almost half of Lynnwood's population, I'm a renter, a group that has not been adequately represented on the council. All that is to say, my varied experiences have given me a tremendous amount of insight into our city's challenges, as well as the opportunities that await our community if we choose to seize them.
Nick, thank you. Shirley?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm Shirley Sutton, and I have the experience of 40 years of career life. I started out as a poor child, neglected, and was today actually very happy that I was going to sit before a tribunal and get to know you better, as you get to know me better. I've held various management positions with the railroad. To make things short, I am an educator. I have experience of small business. My parents had a business grocery store in our neighborhood. And I remember when they went to the bank to have a loan, they were denied because we lived in a red-dye neighborhood. And so since then, I have been a champion of other people helping. I know my community very well, and I really am glad.
Thank you, Shirley. Now to Patrick. Patrick, are you muted?
Good morning, John. Sorry about that.
There you go.
Good to see you again, and thanks to you and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. The question is, what are my qualifications? I've lived in Lynnwood for 35 years. I married here, I raised my three sons here, and I own a home here. I'm currently on the city council, but this is not my first foray into public service. I was on the Lynnwood Planning Commission many years ago and served as Chair on that commission during the very pivotal time when we were building the downtown area planning for the growth that we're seeing here. I have been a member of cops and clergy almost since the inception of that organization, where we coordinate across congregations and communities and churches in our community to ensure that community issues are brought to light and that we have awareness of those, and we partner with the police to address those. I was a Lynnwood High School mentor for many years, supporting our high school students, and I'm currently a mentor for the University of Washington. And I apologize for my voice being a little scratchy. I was down cheering for our women's volleyball team last night, slightly. Happy to say we beat UCLA Bruins in five sets.
Thanks for this, thanks for the sports report. Naz, now to you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here, taking the time to be here. My qualification is that for the last 25 years, I've been in healthcare management and business management. I have been the Chair and Vice Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the last four years until June of this year. During those four years, I worked very closely with the leadership of the city of Lynnwood, with council members, mayor, and the police department to remove many of the barriers that many of our marginalized people feel in our community. I am proud of the work that I have done with the All Our Welcome decal for our city. I have chosen Lynnwood as my home, and I am only running because of the love of Lynnwood. Lynnwood really matters to me, and the experience that I bring to the job is to make sure leadership is with integrity.
Thank you, Naz. And now to Lisa.
Good morning, and thank you for holding this forum. I am running because I have a lot of experience in exactly the things that are working, that are coming up for Lynnwood right now. I am the Chair of the Cold Weather Shelter. I have a lot of experience with transportation, having served on the Community Transit Board previously when I was on the council, having been involved with the city council, the city center planning that is going to really take off with the arrival of light rail. And I have a background in small business as a legal services provider and with NOMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, which is also a huge issue right now, particularly with our homeless population. But in general, I think it is affecting us all. So I think it's an important time to rejoin the council or offer my services to the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, to our next question, and we'll start with Naz. What are the biggest challenges facing Lynnwood, and what strengths can it draw on to resolve them?
Okay, the biggest challenges facing Lynnwood, I think, is the management of the growth, which is one of the main important platforms of my campaign. I think managing the growth of the city to make sure that we are ahead of the infrastructure for our city, making sure that the city does not grow so rapidly that we cannot contain the growth and will deal with issues. The second issue for me is safety. And safety means for that all the people of Lynnwood would feel safe living in the city of Lynnwood. And All Our Welcome is not just the banner for us to say that all are welcome, but truly mean that in the form of creating that for all the members of our city. And then, next important thing right now, I think, is the post-pandemic management and making sure that we bring also healthcare equity to our residents.
Thank you, Naz. Patrick?
Hi, John. So key issues that the city is facing and what the strengths are we can use to draw on those. I would say first, our greatest strength as a community is the diversity and experience of our population, of our community. We are a very diverse community, and there are a lot of people with great ideas. We need to make sure that we provide formats and forums where those individuals feel welcome to come and provide those ideas, because there's some very smart people who can help us get through these challenges. The other strength that we have is the transportation nexus. We have light rail coming in. We already, of course, have the freeways. We need to take advantage of that transportation nexus to bring very good, high-paying jobs from other cities in our area to Lynnwood so that we can bring those members of the community along as well. We need to make sure that we have budget to support our first responders so we can deal with the crime that we know that's growing in our area. And we need to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our community in terms of mental health and drug abuse so that we have the facilities to take care of those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, question to you.
Thank you. So I think those have been great answers. I think that the growth is really critical, and I perceive that as needing to make sure that the growth doesn't run over the current residents and that their voices and their quality of life is not severely damaged by what is coming down the pipe, and that we have high-quality development as we do that. And so that means keeping things in scale, you know, in some neighborhoods, allowing infill, but making sure that it does not detract from the quality of life. We have a real opportunity to address climate change as we become the public transit hub even more than we have been in the past for South Snohomish County, and I think that that's another asset that we have that is going to be really critical. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Shirley, now to you.
Yes, I think it's very important to recognize that not everyone thinks and act the same. I mean, we all are trying to learn from each other. And diversity, to me, is very critical. I'm involved in a number of clubs, community events, and I continue to see a lack of the diversity that people say we have here. And I'd like to be able to suggest that maybe the council needs to get out and get a reality check and really understand who we're serving. And that, to me, is one of the most crucial things. Do we need to have a partnership with everybody, not just with a few people, not just with the rich, but we need to have everyone in this community to not only feel safe, but also be treated with respect? And that's something that I have fought for a number of years, and I will continue to fight that, fight that fight, because if we don't do that, all of us are not going to make it.
Thank you, Shirley. Nick?
Sure, I mean, the obvious answers here are housing, public safety, and homelessness. And a core theme in all of these issues is, that I don't think is talked about enough, is just the escalating cost of living here is absolutely crushing our workers and feeding into this weird negative feedback loop that degrades everybody's quality of life. Because when housing costs go up, entry-level workers leave. Businesses can't find staff, which then have to increase prices to afford increased wages, which further makes living here unaffordable because we haven't built enough housing for our workforce. So housing costs go up, and so the spiral continues. It increases existing inequities, and it leads the most marginalized to feel helpless. Our city has to acknowledge the role it plays in this through our zoning and codes before we can begin to become part of the solution. Luckily, this is something that our city council actually has the power to change, and I look forward to being an advocate for that end.
Thank you. Our third, our next question, Lisa, we'll start with you. As now planned, do you support Lynnwood's Community Justice Center? Why or why not?
So ideally, we would not incorporate the, I mean, we would incorporate, but the mental health and substance abuse treatment close to, but not actually within the center, because I think that is really a late point in the thing. But, you know, I have not reviewed it to the level that the current council has. I put my input in early on in the process and said that I thought that the role of the police and incarceration was changing in this country and that they should reconsider it with respect to that. And I think that the additional money and expansion of the mental health facility is a good move from what they were going with before. I do think we need to change how we look at policing and we need to reduce our reliance on the police to solve all sorts of problems.
Lisa, thank you. Next to Nick.
Sure, and so the question was, do we support the Community Justice Center as it is currently planned? I acknowledge this is an emotional issue. It's very charged right now. A lot of people have a lot of feelings, and I would acknowledge that most of them are valid. But to me, the Community Justice Center is this really impressive new project that represents the next step in the criminal justice system and how it's evolving. When people talk about defunding the police, what I really think what they're talking about is trying to reform our criminal justice system to make sure that our police are doing what they're designed to do and that we have facilities and other workers who can actually help those who are suffering from things like undiagnosed mental health issues or substance abuse issues, which are law enforcement, that's not their job. And so I know this project will be able to save lives. It may have been able to save my brother's life, who suffered many of these same problems. And I support Representative Lauren Davis's efforts to add robust mental health components to this.
Great, thank you, Nick. Shirley, to you. Shirley, do you need to unmute?
Thank you. This is a highly-charged issue, and everyone has a different take on it. From my side of the fence and from the community members that I associate with, they would like to see some priorities set in terms of being able to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I think once we start listening to other folks who don't come to our council meetings because they, whatever reason, that we need to have more voices input on this. This is a great thing for us to ask people, our individuals that's living in this area, in our city, to take on another tax, to take on another thing to build when we have other folks out in our community who really need to have more help. And as far as the correctional facility, I think part of it is really wonderful. I believe in the mental health part of it, but I also believe that everyone else.
Thank you, Shirley. Next to Patrick.
So as has been pointed out, this is a very critical issue in our community right now, but I am strongly in favor, and I voted twice in favor of moving this forward. Lynnwood is currently exporting our inmates. That means when we arrest individuals for misdemeanor crimes, we don't have enough beds in our current facility to house those individuals. We send them all over the state, including to Eastern Washington. And this is completely unfair to those individuals and to their families. They're torn away from their clergy, away from their families, away from their support structure, and they're sent to some place that they're completely unfamiliar with. They're often placed in vehicles for long periods of time, traveling to locations they may not even know. Building the mental health abuse, substance abuse facility adjacent to the jail but not part of the jail is critical. Lauren Davis, Representative Lauren Davis testified that when inmates are able to receive treatment while in jail, their ability to recover is vastly increased. This is a revenue-neutral construction. Because of the way it's being built and the way it'll be managed, this is not a tax on our city or on our community. So this is important, and I'm happy to have voted for it twice.
Thank you, Patrick. Now Naz.
Thank you. I think in the last few years, we have seen a lot of issues that has come up that has made the community be very concerned. In the format that is presented currently in phases, the first phase is to be increasing the jails and doing all the work. I am not against renovating the place, making it more bigger and accessible, and creating a mental health area in there. As Representative Davis worked diligently to make sure that we do include a mental health facilities to be part of this, but that is not included in the first phase that it's going through. That is not going to be happening until Phase 2. And I think the community needs to be involved in this, and there wasn't enough clarity and communication and input from the community. And I think it needs to be reviewed.
Naz, thank you, and thank you all. I think we could spend the entire hour on that one question. So I thank you for some thoughtful responses there. Our next question, we'll start with Shirley. In your view, what's the tenor of Lynnwood Council meetings? And this is not unique to Lynnwood. This is an issue for almost all city councils. And what changes, if any, would you support to balance the need for civility while allowing people to express their viewpoints and share information?
First of all, I think the council members really should get out into their community and make presentations where those particular individuals can learn about the issues that we're facing as a city. And we tend to be closed-minded, I think, at times when we think that everybody is like us, and we're not. Everybody is not rich. Everyone has, is struggling to make a life for themselves and their families. And we have to really, I think, be a little bit more sensitive to that. And so I would like to see the council maybe pick a area or something or have somebody invite them on a monthly basis to hold their meetings at that location instead of them having to struggle and come down to the city hall, because that's where people really do interact in more of an honest way.
Thank you, Shirley. Nick, to you.
Frankly, you know, I think the Lynnwood City Council does a decent job of being transparent. I mean, everything is available online. It's really easy to catch the minutes, to watch what's going on. There's ample public hearings. There's lots of public comments, opportunities, as we have seen lately. It's been interesting. I think the main issue is just to make sure that we have a broad representation of people in the city council. I agree with Shirley here in that having broad, different viewpoints in the council is really important, whether that is simply having representatives represent different occupations, different income classes, housing classes, genders, and so on, or simply having some of them go out into the community more often to bring different groups' wants, needs, dreams back to the council to make our deliberations even stronger.
Great, thank you. Patrick, to you, please.
So the tenor of the council meetings, I actually would say that there is a huge improvement recently in engagement between council members, the administration, and staff. So I'm very happy to see the improvement in that space. Council has been focused on having extended public hearings to ensure that members of the community have the opportunity to come and have their voices heard. We've had some extremely lengthy public hearings recently where individuals were able to speak and then come back and speak again during the same meeting, which is a little bit of a break from what is commonly allowed. We've worked very hard to ensure that members of the community feel welcome, and we really focus on listening and understanding what they're saying, even if we perhaps are coming from a different environment from those individuals. I have extended invitations multiple times in these meetings for one-on-one conversations outside of the city council to meet with members of the community. And I'm happy to say, many members of the community have taken me up on that, and I've met with them in their homes and other places around the city. Lynnwood struggles to have good participation from the community. We need to make sure our council meetings continue to be friendly so people feel like they can come and participate.
Thank you, thank you. Naz, to you.
I think our city council is doing an okay job of communicating with the community. However, I think that we can bring more openness and operate with more inclusivity. We can hear the public comments, but how we go about resolving those and answering back to the community is also important. And I think it's important, again, to be operating with openness and inclusivity and while continuing to achieve our community's vision. And that will require the community's participation and making sure that we are communicating with integrity in our leadership and that we are not being partisan about the issues that are faced by our city and to make sure that, as council members, we are nonpartisan elected individuals.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, so I have to say that I do think that the civility among council has improved since I was on the council. I do think, and I think that the addition of the online accessibility has been awesome. It really allows people to engage. I'm concerned, I mean, I do think that we have been affected a little bit by the anonymization that happens online that makes people kind of less conscious and careful about how they denigrate other people. I'm just going to say that. On the other hand, I think that, so I think that those norms are going to be more standardized as time goes on. And it is true that responsiveness, I mean, you cannot just listen to people. You have to engage with them, and that is the obligation of a council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. The next question, and we'll start with Naz. And I want to talk about the budget process, and I want to know, I want to get your ideas for how the council and Lynnwood officials can better involve residents in those decisions and encourage some discussion about the budget, about services, about revenue and taxes, and, you know, what, if, when, services, if, if or when they need to be cut. And again, Naz, let's start with you.
Okay, thank you for that. I think the Community Justice Center is a perfect example of that. I think if the community was involved in that decision of the spending of $69 million, it would really make a difference to have the community behind the expenditure of the money that we are going to be using for anything that we're going to be spending. I don't believe that every budget that we need to approve needs to go through the public approval, but I do believe big expenditures need to be approved by the community, need to be something that the community is involved, and they can put their opinion into it, and that we work as a community as to how we want to proceed with the money that everybody is really paying into. So it is our responsibility to make sure that we hear the community.
Thank you, Naz. Patrick?
So I work with, in finance at Microsoft, that's what my job is. I'm dealing with big numbers every day. So working with the city budget and the numbers that are involved there is kind of fundamental to what I do. I recently met with the city Finance Director, Michelle, and we reviewed the budget together because I had quite a few questions about it. I think the first thing the city needs to do, and the city is aware of this, I shared the I shared this feedback with them. I think the budget as it's produced needs to be more accurate and it needs to be more transparent. It also needs to be simplified and made easier to read. With my background in finance, even I struggle to go through and understand how you line up the columns and rows across the budget in a way that makes sense. And trying to understand where the money is coming and going is extremely difficult as it's currently presented. So we need to simplify how we present it. Linwood has a great economic base with the mall, with new businesses. Home Depot chose us as a location for the new facility because we are a great economic base. We need to make sure we're spending that money properly and we need more citizen input. People coming to our council meetings, sharing with us what is important to them so we can address that.
Thank you, Patrick. Lisa, to you.
So I agree with Patrick that it is challenging and we really should not expect, you know, every citizen to slog through the budget. I think it is easy, I mean, I'm supportive of kind of some citizen budgetary more involvement, but that there's a real danger there that you focus on the little things instead of the big rocks, you know, the things that cost real big money, such as, you know, a criminal justice center or a recreation center or the police department budget. Those are the things and we need to find a better way to survey a broad swath of the community, not just the people who show up at meetings, to get their priorities on those things. We tend to get focused on little tiny things than a lot of arguments about, you know, the festival fund. When, you know, it's such a minor part of the budget, it is not where we should be spending our focus and our time.
Thank you, Lisa. Nick, to you, please.
You know, you're going to give me 60 seconds, but honestly, all the answers here have been really great. There's not a whole lot more to add about budgeting. I would just add that we have representatives for a reason. We can't expect our residents to be paying attention to budgetary, like minor manners, when they have very real lives and other pressing concerns. That's why it's so important that the people who are elected to council really work with the finance folks and like figure out how to translate this into normal English speak and go out into the public where people are and engage them. I'm willing to do that. I have the energy. I have the time. And I really want people to understand what's going on in the city. And I'll add that, just like Nas said, for big budget items, I think those are the most critical for having that, those public hearing process of getting input. But otherwise, we can't expect everyday people with jobs and families and other concerns to be dealing with all this. That's why we're getting paid.
Great, thank you, Nick. Shirley, please. Shirley?
Sorry about that. I keep forgetting I have to unmute myself. I do agree. I do agree with everything that all the candidates that we have shared with you. It's very important. But also, I think it's important to make sure that we are inclusive, more inclusive than ever because of the fact that this is not a normal situation that's happened to us. The last year and a half, we have been seeing a struggle of our community. Those individuals that really are needing help can't get help because they don't know how to access help and et cetera and et cetera. And I just want us to be more sensitive. This would be my first and second go around on the council, I'm hoping. And I still favor people being talked to, invited, and also being assisted. And I think if we do that, keep those things in mind as council as we make our decisions and our choices and recommendations, I think we'll be okay. But otherwise, we need to be more...
Great, thank you, Shirley. Our next question, we're going to start with Lisa. Excuse me. What issues remain to be addressed in Linwood regarding the pandemic? And how would you seek to address those remaining issues?
Well, I think they have really highlighted a lot of things. I would go back to the health equity issue. I mean, the pandemic, I mean, it was so great to see people together and the nation pull together and, you know, offer vaccines for free and testing for free and all of that. We did, and the funding was there for that. And that is great. And I think that we need to expand upon that to, you know, make sure that people have good access to healthcare. That is something that we are, have been really working on.
Great, thank you. Shirley, to you. Shirley?
Okay. I think it's very important that all these ideas come together and with us being sensitive people, that's why we're here, which care about our community, that's why we're here. We're willing to put up our frontline, that's why we're here. And as long as we go in with the idea that we are helping rather than hurting, to me, that's success. That's success.
Okay, thank you. Nick, to you, please.
Sure. And like Lisa was saying, this pandemic has exposed a lot of fault lines and inequities in our community. And the one I really want to highlight right now, that the troubling part that's still going on is what's happening with our small businesses. Every single day of this pandemic, many of our small businesses have been walking a fine line between just doing okay and struggling to make ends meet. Business is about predictability and the past year and a half have been anything but. Add to that that the owners and managers are overworked, utterly exhausted. The employment landscape is changing so fast that they can't even find staff. And so I propose two ideas of what things we can do to address that. We can, on the one hand, provide a helping hand with advertising and work with our tourism department to launch a marketing campaign that shares our local businesses directly with our residents via mailer and promotional campaign. I would also continue our job fairs and coax our small businesses to attend because frankly, we're too busy to see the broader employment landscape and getting a glimpse of what others are offering will help us get our business models, prices, and wages back in line.
Thank you. And Nas, to you, please.
As we see the impact of COVID-19, besides the economic impacts, we also see the healthcare inequities. And I am in healthcare. So to me, economic inequity and healthcare inequity go hand in hand. As Nick said, a lot of our small businesses are suffering. And it is very important for City of Linwood, especially council members, whose job is to have a balanced budget and create policies and procedures, make sure that the economic impact of COVID-19 will not paralyze the city and make sure that we continue to help our small residents with state, city, and federal grants that we have been getting to make sure we can help these businesses come back to life and come back to getting the economic gears going. And healthcare equity is part of that as well.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with, excuse me, start with Nick.
Sorry, John. Real quick, did you want me to respond to that question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped over you. Please go ahead.
The, by far, the most impactful and tragic issue, aside from the loss of life from the pandemic, is the evictions of community members and the challenge of how we balance fairness to those renters and the property owners. This is not an issue that has an easy solution. There are many, many families who, through no fault of their own, did not have the finances to be able to afford their rent. And there are many property owners who, through no fault of theirs, have received very, very limited income from those properties for which they still have to pay maintenance, they have to pay taxes, they have fees and utilities that they're responsible for. So this is an extremely painful issue without an easy solution, but one that the city council has been working on. And we've been out trying to get funds to support that. Businesses are struggling to hire. That's impacting their revenues. That means they can't offer good paying wages to members of our community. So we've got to support those businesses, as has been mentioned. But truly, getting a hand on these evictions and how we help those community members and those property owners, we've got to do that. That's first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And again, my apologies for skipping over you. We'll stick with you for the next question here. What initiatives would you support? And this is a broad range, but often related, to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
I am a very strong supporter of Mike Miller and the work that he does over there at the Linwood Food Bank. I really believe that community support is going to go a lot farther than institutional support for these challenges. As the community, as the congregations, as the service organizations continue to build their strength in this area, they're able to find resources that are custom tailored to those individuals to meet their needs. So as we, as a community, continue to give to those service organizations or to those congregations and provide volunteer service to those, we're going to be able to address many of those challenges. The city does have a responsibility. And I think the Community Justice Center and building this substance and mental abuse facility right here, this is a lighthouse project. This hasn't been done elsewhere in our region, anywhere close to the scale we're going to have. That will provide huge opportunity to bring those services right to the doorstep of people when they need those services the most. So that'll be a huge benefit to those individuals and our community alike.
Thank you, Nick. Shirley, to you. Shirley?
Yep, here we go. Whatever, whatever happens, we also have to remember that everyone doesn't have the same opportunities. And it's important, I think, to really understand that the problems or the issues that face our small businesses is very, very severe. My mom and dad, we owned a grocery store for 38 years and we had very little help when we needed half-help. But we struggled because we had that community. And our community was around there to help us make it a success. And they owned that store for 38 years and that store is still standing. And the next generation of people, of population, is still mostly there as well. So I know that we need to come together, no matter who or what. We also need to be, understand that not everybody can have them.
Thank you, Shirley. Nas, to you.
Thank you. So for the initiatives to support to address homelessness, I think living wage job is the most important thing that we can do to support homelessness. The fact remains that it is the economic inequities that is driving these issues of homelessness and many people having to deal with food insecurity. As Patrick mentioned, community leaders like Mike Miller, who are doing a fantastic job of helping with the food insecurities. But there are many other community members that I know culturally don't feel comfortable to come out to say they are insecure. There are many children in this country, in our city, in here, right here in Linwood, who go to sleep hungry. And that is just not acceptable for our community. We need to make sure we address mental health issues and all the issues that are affecting our community. And it's important to move forward with that.
Thank you. Patrick, to you.
I think we started with me for this one. But you got my name...
I get to be Patrick now, right?
I am sorry. Nick, go ahead, please.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine. So just so everyone knows, that was Patrick who started this answer.
Right, right.
All right. Okay, so really, all roads here, I think, lead back to emboldening our partnerships and succeeding in our efforts with the Community Justice Center. The Community Justice Center, again, is an impressive new project that has the potential to completely overhaul how people in our city, in the region, interact with our criminal justice system and diverting them away from an endless cycle of incarceration, criminalization, and hopelessness. I know we'll be able to save lives, better treat people with undiagnosed mental health illness and substance abuse problems. And again, I support Representative Lauren Davis's big efforts to add robust mental health facilities to it. Beyond that, I would like to see us get out of the way of nonprofits like Housing Hope that are trying to help those in despair and provide assistance to organizations like the Linwood Food Bank, where I've been volunteering weekly throughout the pandemic, and Robert Smiley's The Hand Up Project.
Thank you. Lisa, please.
Yeah, I have a slightly different take on this. I mean, the reason we have some of these problems is that we've been defunding public housing, public services, institutions that create a strong safety net. And that is, you know, that is the problem. And we've led wild inequities in our, in our community and in our nation. And, you know, democracies don't work like that with huge inequities. There's a famous quote on that and I'm not even going to try and paraphrase it. But it, I mean, that is the problem. And so I think we need to build those institutions. We need to support them. That's what tax money is for. And then, you know, it's great that other nonprofits and individuals are stepping forward, but the institutions are critical for continuity and for robust responses. So, and then I think we need to look at creative things like community land trusts for affordable housing and those kind of things.
Great, Lisa, thank you. Okay, and I apologize for the earlier confusion. Patrick, I am going to start with you on the next question. And this regards housing. And I want, I want to hear candidates' thoughts on what the needs are in Linwood for housing and how do we, how do we increase the stock that, stock of housing so that it keeps, assures affordable rents and mortgages for the folks that work in Linwood and want to live in Linwood? And again, Patrick?
This is also a very difficult question. We currently have Whispering Pines, which is under reconstruction or will be shortly. That is affordable housing as defined by state and federal numbers, the way they do it. But the challenge is that some of those affordable housing that we have in Linwood is already reaching end of life. The facilities are not in good care because they're simply old. The only way we're going to be able to balance affordable housing with the increased pressure on housing costs really is through partnerships with the private parties, such as those have been mentioned earlier, as well as Snohomish County. They have some great rental programs in place. We have to do a great job partnering with them to ensure that funding is there so that property owners can afford to build and lease or rent out those properties while at a rate that those individuals in our community are able to afford. But I think we also need to ensure we are getting good paying jobs into Linwood so that we're dealing this both from what is the cost, but also what are the resources that families and individuals have available to be able to afford housing?
Thank you. Nas?
Thank you. It is very important for us to be able to distinguish between affordable housing and community housing. Affordable housing means that 30% of your income goes to pay for your housing. So that ties us back again to living wage jobs, to be able to have living wage jobs so that you could afford your housing. So one of the most important things that we need to look at is that our city is growing. Seattle is growing. Puget Sound area is growing. So we do need to provide different kinds of housing. We need to bring mixed-use housing into the conversation and bring different zoning, if necessary, to make sure that we can continue to support our community. I know City of Linwood Planning Department is working diligently on different programs and different projects. And they're doing a fantastic job of creating that.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes. So, I mean, nationwide, it's pretty clear that there has been a shortage in the construction of new housing units. And it has not kept up with population growth. And that is, that is why we have problems. But we have particular problems in high-growth areas such as the Puget Sound. So I think one of the things is that we do have... So I think one of the things is that we do have to, you know, we've zoned for some higher-density places, and we're currently building some, some higher density. But we also need to provide some other options so that you're, you're not caught between purchasing a full home and living in an apartment. There need to be other options, and we need to zone for those. And, and I think that the accessory dwelling unit, stuff that I supported and pushed forward while I was on is an important part of that. It's, it's not, but it is a really good thing making in-scale improvements to our, to our housing stock.
Thank you. Shirley, to you, please? Shirley?
Thank you. I think it's important for us to have a real good understanding. Thanks, Nas, for the definition of affordability. But it's still, we're dealing with people's lives. We're dealing with families, growing families. We're, we're, we're losing some of our elders because the fact that they cannot no longer afford to be where they're at. The foreclosures are imminent. It's just one thing after another. So I would say that, along with the other candidates, that we really need to have the pulse, the pulse of the community. Because they're the ones that are going to give us the ideas and the help and support. Now, we also have another factor is that we have a population out there that do not have the luxury of being able to have electronics or, or computer or any of those technology things. And they're the people that are left out, and they're the people that need to be at the table. So I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about where we're going with this housing.
Shirley, thank you. And Nick?
Yeah, I would take two approaches to address housing affordability in our city. The first is emboldening our partnerships with charities, nonprofits, and other regional organizations, as others have stated, that seek to create low-income accessible housing in our city. These cost restrictions allow these residents to have a much greater disposable income and participate in our economy, in our community, in a meaningful way. The second would be to substantially address the structural problems creating the affordability crisis in the first place. That means working with council and the mayor to do a top-to-bottom audit of our zoning and building codes. We're already starting that with the Housing Action Plan. And I would just add that if a rule is negatively affecting affordability and there's no public safety or other pertinent concern, we should seriously reconsider its usefulness. I could go into a lot more detail on this. This is my topic. This is my issue. But I'll end it saying my knowledge and passion on this issue has earned me the sole endorsement in this race by the Affordable Housing Council.
Thank you. Our next to last question, we'll start with Lisa. What are the most pressing environmental issues? And this can include climate change that Linwood faces, and what would you propose to address them?
Yeah, well, I think you put your finger, I mean, this is an existential crisis for all of us, and we need to take it seriously. The things that I think we need to do is you need to really look at creative ways to utilize the arrival of light rail to, to reduce the greenhouse, our greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation is the second largest, I mean, is the biggest greenhouse gas emissions generator in this country. So there's that, I think, and in that, we need to look at, be looking at things like tree canopy cover. You know, every development cannot, I don't think our tree code right now saves enough. Our tree program is really good, but I don't think enough people know about it. We need to be looking at different roofings that reduce the heat sink element that comes along with global warming.
Thank you, Lisa. Nick, to you?
Sure, and I'll just add that my campaign actually went carbon neutral this week, so that's cool. When I talk about the environment, though, I inevitably end up talking about our parks, and the reason is very simple. I've served in our city's Parks and Recreation Board for nearly three years. I've heard more things about stormwater drainage, tree canopy coverage, and ecological preservation than you could shake a stick at. While I'm an unequivocal advocate of Linwood's parks and trail systems, what I'm most excited about is an incredible opportunity opening up to promote voluntary park stewardship programs. We do this to great success already with our police and the Citizens Academy, but we are only seeing the very first blossoms of this effort in our parks with the Friends of Scriber Lake. Christine Frizzella and I were at their kickoff event last weekend pulling up invasive plants, and it was really rewarding being out there with the community. It's my belief that fostering a sense of ownership in our neighborhood parks will lead to the whole community being better caretakers and advocates overall.
Thank you, Nick. Shirley, to you, please?
There we go. I think it's important for us to look at not only partnering better, but also understanding that everyone needs to have a green space or should have green space to live and breathe. And some of the things that I think would help cut down on the emissions of the negative, like smoke and gas and so forth, is to really think about what we can do in our own environment to make, to participate and be part of the, the, the change that we need to have when it comes to our environment. The slashing of trees and cutting down of trees and cutting down on the green space and things like that that are not really acceptable anymore. Also, I think if, as we go, change our vehicles to electric as they are discarded, it might be a help as well, one of the helps, anyway.
Thank you, Shirley. Nas, to you?
Thank you. I think the pressing environmental issues is affecting the planet, the world. It's everywhere. But one of the interesting studies that I was reading about in multiple cities such as Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and areas like that, they have done a study and they have understood that even the greenery that is available is done with inequity. So one of the most important part that is for me in the environmental fight is to make sure that we even bring equity to the environmental issues and make sure that neighborhoods that have the least access to public transportation, the least access to parks, they can do that. City of Linwood Planning Department is working with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission to make sure that we bring that to the public and so that they work together in collaboration.
Thank you. And Patrick?
This is not a one-minute question, but I will go fast. There's a proposal before Linwood right now to develop a community playpark, take away the playpark and create affordable housing. Which do you choose? These are the types of questions the city council faces, and this is why experience in the community on the city council is essential. We have to balance the environmental needs against the growth that is coming. We can't control either. We have to manage both. How do you balance growth required by the state law with environmental issues that drive housing prices? We're either going to need to build taller or we're going to build wider. And wider means we take away open space. Taller means we impact our communities by having tall buildings in proximity to our bedroom communities, and that's not something anybody wants. We have to enforce clean and environmentally friendly building. That means the new construction that goes on, we have to emphasize environmental controls in those buildings to make sure that they're green. But we can't afford to do that on our own, so we have to partner with the state, wow, and the federal agencies to help offset the car, those costs, and finally, build the city center, fewer cars commuting, more pedestrians, friendly to our community, getting on light rail.
Thank you, Patrick. And you're right, and, and all of these questions, we could, could spend an hour on, I'm sure. Okay, for our last question, and we will give you each ninety seconds to, to answer. And this is your chance to talk about a subject that maybe we haven't discussed. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community? And we'll start with Shirley. Thank you.
There we go. I think, I think this is such a broad question. And it's really, for me, a little difficult because I'm still on the idea of let's, as a community, decide what it is we want to do to make this environment more healthier for us, keep us healthy, keep us well. And part of that might be something as cutting out the use of plastic containers. We have, we have, we can, we can have like a box container or something, not plastic. We've got to get rid of plastic, plastic sacks, plastic this, plastic bottles, everything. That, to me, would be one little step forward to having the kind of environment actually that we want and having the kind of city that we want. We won't have to be walking through a lot of garbage on the, on the, on the street with, with, I'm so, I'm just so, so tongue-tied right now because this is one of my favorite soap operas. But anyway, and so I think it's important for us to think of other ways that we can not only just look at the green space, but we need to also start looking at how we as a neighbor can be, be better healthier in our communities. And that would be maybe, for instance, looking at other ways to make the imprint that we want.
Shirley, thank you. Nick, to you, please?
Sure. I mean, the first thing no one's mentioned is it's Nas' birthday. Is that right? Yeah, congratulations. No, no, my wife and I like to call Linwood our forever home. We just feel so fortunate that I've been able to start my dream business right here in this town we love. I enjoy my career. I get to create decent jobs. We do a lot of philanthropy and we build community. I love that Linwood has spaces for small businesses like mine to thrive, and I really, really want there to be more of them. That's why when you listen to me on my weekly Zoom talks, you'll hear me talk a lot about things like reexamining ways to gently increase density, investing in public spaces, and enhancing our neighborhood commercial zoning. And the reason that is is because all of these are about creating spaces for entrepreneurs in our communities to thrive. In my view, the neighborhood bakery, like the one I grew up in, the courtyard cafe, the weekend cider house, these are all just as much amenities for our neighborhoods as anything else we've discussed. And that's why my time on city council will see me advocating actively to empower our communities to develop the culture they want to see. My passion for this and other important issues has earned me the support of so many in Linwood already, like our mayor, city council members, police and firefighters, organizations that advocate for our essential workers and housing. I would just be so humbled if you at home also pick Nick this November so that we can move forward and prosper together.
Thank you, Nick. Patrick, to you, please?
There is a lot that is great about Linwood. We have a wonderful community. We have great participation. This is a wonderful place to live, and this is why I and my family have chosen to live here. There are past wrongs that have existed in Linwood, and those past wrongs need to be corrected. They also need to be forgiven. We need to understand history so that we don't repeat it. We need to understand history so that we can build infrastructure control so that those mistakes are not repeated. The Diversity and Inclusion Commission is an investment by the city in doing exactly that. The intent is to draw the community together, and it is critical for our go-forward plan. We've got to grow as a community. We need to look past how we may look different, how we may be different, how we, sorry, how we may have different backgrounds. Instead, look at how we're the same. We love our families. We love our nation. We love our community, and we love our planet. There are core fundamental values that we all share that far outweigh the differences between each of us in our community. We need to emphasize those, that commonality rather than the differences. There's no arguing that there's inequity in our community, in our nation, and even in our world. But a lot of the inequity is driven by ignorance rather than any overt action. As we get to know one another, as our knowledge of our community, as our knowledge of one another's backgrounds, our cultures, our histories, our interests, as that grows, that directly opposes prejudice, bias, bigotry, and the differences we have. So the Fair on Forty-Fourth, our community activities, our Get Out, Meet Your Neighbors, those will help us grow our city, and those are the issues that I'll continue to lead as I'm elected to city council this fall.
Thank you. Nas, to you, please, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for bringing that up. You shouldn't have, but okay. Thank you.
I'll spare you my singing voice.
Okay, I don't want to lose too much of my time because ninety seconds is all I've got. I go back to growth management, safety, and healthcare equity. Like Nick and Patrick and Shirley and Lisa, we all love Linwood. That's why we are doing this. I have chosen Linwood to be my home, my permanent home until I am on this earth celebrating many more birthdays, hopefully, but here we are. And I think COVID- nineteen has shown us a face, a side that has woken us up to make sure that we are cognizant of the healthcare inequities, the environmental inequities, the economic inequities, and making sure that we can bring equities to all of this. We need to make sure that in City of Linwood, we continue to work together to create an environment that supports our environment, to make sure we work with the Planning Department, with the Parks Department, to make sure that all the areas of the City of Linwood have equal access to being healthy and living in an environment that is supportive of all kinds of health. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Lisa?
Yes, so I would say that resiliency, which comes from cohesion within the community. And I, I think that we have seen a setback to a certain extent with that with COVID because we are, we are interacting less with our neighbors and with each other. You know, we tend to be sticking to our own separate groups. So I think that there's a little bit of that that we need to recover from because we have made strides since I was first on the council in building a, a community that, that, you know, connections. But we don't have it to the same degree that, that some other communities surrounding us do. You know, when someone says an Edmonds kind of day, people kind of have a vision. When they say a Leonard kind of day, not so much. The other thing is that I think that a key to that is that people have the survival services that they need and that those are provided at an affordable rate, and those would be housing, healthcare, you know, utilities and transportation. And those depend on, you know, good wage jobs and opportunities. So I think there's a lot there that we can work on. And I think the experience counts when you're addressing these things tonight. I spare your word. Thank you.
Lisa, thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates. This has been an engaging and informative session, and I appreciate all your, all your responses and the thought you put into them and keeping things concise. That's very much appreciated. The League appreciates the candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and others will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and on its YouTube channel. You can find links at L W V S N O H O, so L W V snowho.org. We encourage voters to explore additional information about these and all candidates. This Snohomish County Voters pamphlet will be mailed to residences, residences starting October thirteenth. And you can also go to votefor11.org, which is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October fourteenth, and election day is November second. Please remember to vote and get your ballots in well before the November second election day. This concludes our candidate forum. Again, thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.